Counselor Neil Anderson.
Yeah.
Attorney Anderson.
Yeah.
Boochi, here.
Here.
Condon, DePietro.
Here.
Furlong.
Yeah.
Who's that?
Lucy.
Yeah.
Nesta. Spatafora.
Here. First order of business. Approve of the minutes.
Yeah. Approval of the minutes of February 3rd and February 10th.
On Counselor Christensen's motion to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll not read them all at once.
Okay. The Honorable City Council. Dear Members of the Council, pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby reappoint Charles D. Ivan, 42 Appleton Street, Malden, as a member of the Planning Board, said term to expire 10/1/2013. Confirmation is required. Pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby reappoint Peter Chu, 23 Rosemont Street, Malden, as a member of the Planning Board, said term to expire March 1st, 2013. Confirmation is required. Pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby reappoint Patricia Kelly Lawhorn of 84 Felsway East, Malden, as a member of the Planning Board, said term to expire March 1st, 2012. Pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Lorraine Danker of 530 Highland Ave., Malden, as a member of the Planning Board, said term to expire March 1st, 2010. Ms. Danker will replace David DiAngelo, who recently resigned.
Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Would you ask the clerk to speak into the microphone?
Sure.
Sorry.
No problem.
Pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Michael Cipriani of 77 High Road, High Rock Road, Malden, as an associate member of the Planning Board, said term to expire March 1st, 2010. Mr. Cipriani will complete Lorraine Danker's terms. Confirmation is required. Pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Charles Norman of 1519 Eastern Ave., Malden, as an associate member of the Planning Board. Mr. Norman has declined.
So before I take a motion, I just wanted to remind the Council that all appointments go to ordinance based on last year's rules. So on Counselor Christensen's motion to refer to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Appointments are referred to ordinance. Next order of business.
Taxi drivers. Do I have to read them out?
Yes. If the Council doesn't mind, we'll take all the taxi drivers' licenses at once.
Renewal of John F. Coughlin, 16 Millwood Street, Dorchester, working for Malden Trans. Michael Checker, 19 Mount Vernon Street, Malden. William Cook, 31 Mount Vernon Park. Elise Jeanette Diaz, 270 Charles Street, Malden. Justin Eames, 145 Ferry Street, Apartment 3, Everett. Alan Fisher, 28 Hazelwood Street, Malden. Carl Freeman, 127 Sammott Street, Malden. Robert Garrett, 36 Hazelwood Street, Malden. Robert Haas, 249 Lantern Road, Revere. Ed Harris, 23 Nahann Street, Apartment 1, in Lynn. Abdullah Hillow, 611 Broadway, Apartment 1, Lynnfield. Timothy Michael Hogan, 249 Mountaineave, Malden. Panrin J. Hunt, Post Office Box 144, Malden. Daniel P. Knight, 69 Columbia Street, Malden. James Bruce McCauley, 120 Conant Road, Melrose. Cheryl Ann McCush, 102 Bowden Street, Malden. Michael Monteforti, 430 Charles Street, Apartment 1, Malden. Michael W. Mullen, 162 Sheridan Street, Medford. Donald Francis Porter, 25 Sherman Street, Everett. Anthony Rossino, Tony Niblickway, North Reading. Kevin Slama, 137 Green Street, Malden. John Spillane, 8480 Silbert Street, Apartment 312, Lynn. Dennis Sullivan, 500 Revere Beach Boulevard, Revere. William Sweet, 45 Edmund Street, Malden. David Charles Toner, 53 Tremont Street, Malden. And Leonard Albert White, 19 Summit Ave., Apartment 4, in Everett.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to licenses, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Refer to license. Next order of business.
Application for a license to drive a taxicab. Gabriel V. Guest, 12 Mount Vernon Street, Melrose. Now these people are all going to vote "drive for taxi time." Roger Hiscock, 25 Adams Ave., Everett. David West, 53 Edmund Street, Malden.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Items are referred to license.
Application for license for taxicab licenses, Malden Trans, 12 cabs. Malden Trans, 33 Lebanon Street, seven cabs. Malden Trans, 290 Eastern Ave., 12 cabs. Yellow Trans Inc., 290 Eastern Ave., two cabs.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Items are referred to license.
A petition for number nine Ale Host, 118 Ferry Street, one pool table.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is referred to license. Moving down to motions, orders, and resolutions.
It is the sense of the City Council that the IT Director appear before the full Council to discuss the impact to the city of the new state of Massachusetts data security regulations. Counselor Nesta.
Counselor Nesta for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. The new state of Massachusetts is enacting new data security regulations which is scheduled to take effect on May 1st. I know my firm that I work for during the day is struggling to meet these requirements. So I thought it'd be good to have the IT Director appear before the Council and kind of lay out how and what the city is doing to meet these new security regulations and the potential financial impact to the city. So I hope that you support this resolve. We could have him here in two weeks. Thank you.
Any questions for Counselor Nesta?
Yeah.
Counselor Anderson.
Oh, just a second.
No questions?
Oh, no questions, I'm sorry.
No problem, Counsel. On Counselor Jim Nesta's motion to adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is adopted. Next order of business.
Order that it is the sense of the City Council that the Traffic Commission reopen the investigation of a one-way traffic patent on Elm Street. Counselor Spatafora, DePietro for the committee.
Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, our Council President. Yes, this traffic problem up around the BB school has been a great concern of the neighborhood. And the Traffic Commission visited it once already this year, or this past year. And we'd like to get the parties together, the neighborhood and the parents of the BB school together to see if they can fine tune it because there are still a great many problems up there. So I would ask the colleagues to approve.
Thank you, Counselor DePietro. And if I may from the chair, I want to echo Counselor DePietro's thoughts, too. While we want to work with the school committee, the traffic committee rather, and the members of the PTU up there, I do live near the BB school. They have changed the traffic patent. It has affected not only some of the neighbors, but also some of the businesses in the area that it's now a one-way traffic flow. In order to get to those businesses, it creates a bottleneck at the other end. So we're just looking to, like Counselor DePietro said, iron out some of the kinks so everybody in the neighborhood is happy. And with that said, on Counselor DePietro's motion to pass, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is passed. Next order of business.
Resolve. Sense of the City Council that the Traffic Commission adopt parking regulations for Loomis Street. Counselor Boochi.
Counselor Boochi for the paper. On Counselor Boochi's motion to refer to traffic, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is referred to traffic. Next order of business.
Resolve that it is the sense of the City Council that the Traffic Commission consider installing a crosswalk on Salem Street near the bus stop at the intersection of Hyde Street. Counselor Paul Anderson, Counselor John Furlong.
On Counselor John Furlong's motion to refer to traffic, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is referred to traffic.
Order that the City of Malden rescind its acceptance of Section 1 of Chapter 456 of the Acts of 1998 and reaffirm its acceptance of Section 3 of Chapter 456 of the Acts of 1998. Counselors Spatafora, Christensen, Lucy, and DePietro.
Counselor Christensen for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we're all aware of the news from last week concerning certain retiree. And it's caused me, along with some of the colleagues, on the order to take a look at exactly how that provision affects us going forward, what are the cost implications, and whether or not we have any leverage to alter it if it turns out that it's something that we think should be changed. I know Counselor DePietro's going to add a further amendment, which I think is going to help strengthen the order. But I think we really have an obligation to do a little research on that article that appeared last week. So I would ask at the end of discussion that it be referred to ordinance for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Christensen. Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Counselor President. I'd like to offer an amicus amendment to the order. I would like to have the city clerk research the minutes to find out exactly who was present at the meetings. And I'd like to have the city solicitor offer an opinion to us regarding what constitutes service to the city. And if it was 12 meetings in a year, if two meetings were required service, I think it's very important that we define that going forward. This whole thing has outraged a lot of people. And I'm sure everybody in the Council has received calls on it. So I believe it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lucy.
Thank you, Counselor President. For those out there that don't know exactly what Section 1 of Chapter 456 of the Acts of 1998 is, it's, last week there appeared in the paper an article that individuals served time in public office, but also served many years on the Library Board of Trustees. And they were able to add both combined for a pension. So, you know, we saw that. And, you know, something about it just didn't seem right. We may not be able to change this. But going forward, we certainly, you know, it's something that needs to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lucy. Any further questions? So on Counselor DePietro's motion as amended, refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Matters referred to ordinance as amended. Next order of business.
Resolve that it is the sense of the City Council that the Traffic Commission consider permitting crossing guards to issue packing tickets during school hours. Counselor Christensen.
Counselor Christensen for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a longstanding issue of the Ferryway School Council. We've tried over the years to see if there was a way to help improve the traffic flow in the morning exactly between 7:30 a.m. and 8:30 a.m. We have a lot of cars that are double parked and parking in handicap zones, et cetera. So we tried working with the police department to see if there was a way that they could come by for that hour to enforce the traffic flow there. But the shifts don't line up with the hours of the schools. So we then next turn to some of the other departments in the city, like Board of Health. They do not have the ability to issue tickets. So we thought this idea might help solve the problem. And actually, the crossing guards up near the Ferryway School came to me to suggest that they might be interested in working on this matter. So this is simply resolved. It would go to the Traffic Commission where they would consider it. But we really need help on trying to improve the traffic flow in the mornings. God forbid if emergency apparatus had to get up to the school and into the parking lot, I think they would find it very difficult to do so today. So this might be one, you know, potential solution to help with the longstanding problem that we've had at that school and I'm sure other schools across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Christensen. Any questions for the sponsor? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not necessarily a question for the sponsor, but I'd like to speak on the matter and amplify, I think, the concerns that we all have about, you know, as the traffic congestion gets more and more severe throughout the city, in particular around the schools, that the role of those traffic supervisors gets to be much more critical. And I would hope that while the Traffic Commission is looking at this other authorization that could go to these traffic supervisors, that they also look into doing some more training for those persons. You know, I'm sure many of us have seen the situations where people, usually young people, are waiting to cross the street. And what these supervisors seem to want to do is stop the traffic and let every youngster cross no matter when they arrive at that intersection. And it just seems to me that some training would be helpful to take into consideration the effects of what happens when they stop that traffic. You know, maybe we can do some things about having people that are coming up to the intersections wait at the curb for a more appropriate time to cross the street. And I think that would certainly help the safety of the persons that are crossing the street as well as, you know, the safe movement of traffic. So as the Traffic Commission is looking at this other authority to consider granting to these traffic supervisors, we look at a way of doing some more training in a way that the people on the east end of the city know what the west end of the city is doing. So we have some continuity and some consistency as to how those traffic supervisors are moving the flow of traffic. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Any questions for the sponsor? Seeing none, on Counselor Christensen's motion to pass, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Moving down to, excuse me, communications.
We have a letter from Tom Chopoulos from the East Coast Jazz Drum and Bugle Corporation requesting approval of a bingo license at the Malden VFW, 36 Crystal Street, on Sunday evenings.
And for the councils that are vacation, we do have a two-page letter here, as well as, I believe, both the sponsor, Mr. Presiosa was here, I saw him earlier, and Mr. Chopoulos in the audience. If anybody has any questions, but we do have the letter. So if the council has any questions, we can have them come forth. Or we have the letter.
I would be glad to sponsor one of them to make a presentation to the council. But following that, I would ask the council to refer the matter to the License Committee for us to have further dialogue about that. But I think it would be very appropriate for us to hear from the petitioners, some opening statements, about what their intentions are. So I would be glad to sponsor.
On Counselor Anderson's motion to have the sponsor...
A representative.
Representative from East Coast Jazz approach the mic and speak to the council. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I don't know if, I believe there's two here. Mr. Presiosa? Mr. Chopoulos? Either one of you just speak into the mic and state your name and address to the record, please? It should be on now. It's on now.
It is? Is it on now? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, my name is Tom Chopoulos, and I live at 259 Main Street in Stonem. But I grew up in Malden. I lived all my life until three years ago in Malden. Most of you know John Presiosa. I'm not sure his address. If you've had conversations with John, you know he has reasons that he asked me to come here today just in case this were to occur. John has been trying to start up some kind of an adult band, a youth band, and other things outside of the school system for years. He was the founder of the original Drum and Bugle Corps in 1971. When everything hit the fan in 2006, I kind of got out of it at that point. And John did give me a call once and asked if I would help him because he'd like to start the drum corps up again. So at this point, we have an arrangement, which is tentative, depending on approval here of the location and approval of the license by the Lottery Commission, to have a bingo on Sunday nights at the Malden VFW Hall. I did draft up a letter at the request of John for you about pretty much what took place back in 2004, '05, and '06, and how the program we were running at that time just went into tank. Mostly because the smoking rules that the state enacted prohibited any indoor smoking at all. And if you followed it at all, you know that all over the state bingos have been closing. The biggest bingo in the state right now is at Malden Catholic High School. They're drawing 650 people on Sunday night. The hall up the street, they were using at one time, but they don't use it anymore at the VFW. And so since that was always the night that the Drum and Bugle Corps people ran their bingo, I suggested to John that he might want to get a bingo license and use that location at the VFW because it's about three doors away from Malden Catholic. The Malden Catholic bingo gets out at 4:00. And the nighttime bingo on Sunday night would start about 5:00. The doors would open. And we've historically been in that relation with Malden Catholic since the early '70s, when we started the bingo. And it's never been a detriment to Malden Catholic. They've always been the biggest bingo in the state. At this point, the letter pretty much covers about the drum corps, about what happened when we couldn't pay the rent. We were leasing a building, the whole first floor, at where, I don't know what's in there now, but it's across from Dorm Sausage on the right-hand side as he's going down. The old Project Triangle Building. There was a question when we were here before, about three or four years ago, about that. And one of the counselors in particular thought it was kind of a foolish thing to do. But the drum corps traveled extensively. We were world champions twice in the last eight years. And in order to do all the things we needed to do, we needed to have steady income. So we leased a building because that way we knew we had a lease for a certain number of years and our income would always be there, rather than be there at the week-to-week of the owner of the building who might just say one day, gee, you can't come back anymore. Now, for nine years of that lease, we did fine. And then, like I said, not to repeat it. At that time, everything got behind. My wife and I put in $40,000 to keep it going, but it just didn't work. So we had to kind of just abandon things. And one of those is the school committee bill, which was for the winter before because we used to practice in the schools. And we haven't been able to raise funds, my wife and I, to do that, to catch that up. But it's part of the plan of what we would do now, which is to, we owe a little money to, say, Lamson and Davis Hardware. We owe a little bit of money to the police department for a couple of police details. We owe a business down in Maybrook called Mike's Welding, about $175. I mean, and all those things, we expect that's going to be part of our plan to get caught up. But in the meantime, the program is a good program. It's unique. It offers an opportunity to kids that are not in a school environment, that are not athletically inclined, that would like to learn to play a musical instrument and do other things, that would like to go traveling around the country, seeing different places. They don't see a lot because they really spend a lot of time at their skill. In the meantime, we had hundreds of kids. We worked with the school committee for 35 years and never, ever got behind. And it just, everything just went crazy in 2004, '05, and '06. So I think that if some people are concerned that I don't have any intention of working the bingo game, I did it for so many years that I'm not ready to pick up that little chore anymore on Sunday nights. But John has a crew of people, Mrs. Louisa at the Police Department is one, that are going to pull this thing together and make it work. But I could answer questions if you like.
Thank you, Mr. Chopoulos. Before I entertain any questions, I know Counselor Anderson still has the floor. I just want to remind all the councils that this will be referred to ordinance and we're not voting on it tonight. With that being said, Counselor Anderson.
Yes, I would say that neither John Presiosa or Tom Chopoulos are any strangers to this City Council, nor was the East Coast Jazz Drum and Bugle Corps any stranger. And I think, speaking personally, that their absence from the city has been a major loss to us. I always enjoyed seeing them in the parades and knowing what good things that they did. As Mr. Chopoulos has mentioned, a few years ago, the manure hit the compounder. And things got bad. I think that reconsidering their involvement here in the city, and that's what we would do in the ordinance committee, you know, reconsidering what their history in the past has been will give us the opportunity to resurrect and clean up some of the issues and the problems that we had in the past. And so I'm looking forward to supporting an activity that would allow us to get them back on board and get them back on board with taking care of their past obligations and such. So I would urge, as we talk to them in the ordinance committee, that we look to that merit. Thank you.
Counsel, I misspoke. It's actually, I referred to license, so I apologize. But with that being said, yep. But with that being said, I correct myself. Counselor Furlong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I must have missed this when you were speaking, Mr. Chopoulos. What does your function in this?
Personally?
Yeah.
I will just be the person that helps them get familiar with all the things that go on. There's a National Association Headquarters in Indianapolis.
So when you pull the permit off, you do get the license for bingo. You're not the person...
No, I have no intention of working the bingo.
John's name will be on the license, not yours?
I couldn't hear that last sentence.
John's name will be on the license, not yours, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it'll be all under John Presiosa's name.
Yes.
So he won't, the outstanding debt that you spoke about, which will be addressed in the license committee, is that under you?
That's under the name of Youth and the Arts Incorporated.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Furlong. Counselor Christensen.
Yeah, real briefly first. I just want to compliment you on that DVD that you had provided to the council, I think, recently. I had an opportunity to watch the competition, quite a production. My only question, I remember the last time we had this discussion a few years ago. There was this question about what percent of Malden kids make up this corps. Could you remind us of what the percent is, if you have that tonight?
Okay. Right now, the only thing that's working is the drum line. And it's 17 kids, and only two are not from Malden. But there is no horn line yet. So, and it's, my answer is always that the closest one from here that's of any value is in New Jersey is in New Jersey, because drum corps changed. So to have it here in Malden is still a benefit, and we hope, because we're on good terms with the band director, that we'll do well there.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Christensen. Counselor Condon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The group that was running the bingos in 2004, 2005, 2006, what was the name of the group?
Okay, there were two groups that were sponsoring the drum corps. The original group called Metropolitan Youth Services, which is defunct. And the other group is Youth and the Arts Incorporated. Also, the Malden Emergency Center rented space, and the Malden Band Parents Association was also there. So bingo ran Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
So which group were you affiliated with?
Youth and the Arts.
Youth and the Arts, and that's defunct?
No.
No?
I was affiliated with Youth and the Arts, which is listed on the paper before you.
Okay, so it's not?
I was affiliated with Metropolitan Youth Services also.
Is that defunct?
Yes.
Okay, what group owes us money?
Youth and the Arts.
So your involvement with this is strictly an advisor? You're not part of any not-for-profit officer?
No, I'm not an officer or a director of the corporation.
Okay, that group in 2004, 2005, 2006, wasn't the license suspended by the lottery?
No.
Never?
No. We never received any notice of any suspensions. I contacted the lottery on behalf of John and a fellow from Lynn, and I was told that the license application should be submitted, and that they would review it.
Did you owe the state taxes at that time?
Approximately $3,000.
Did you pay that money?
No. They said that because we couldn't see, what happened was, we had the meeting in Braintree, and based upon conversations with somebody here in the Malden City Council, they said we should withdraw our renewal application, because they understood that the Malden City Council wouldn't approve our movement to the temple down next to the school in Maplewood on Salem Street.
And that's because our understanding was, the organization was being looked at by the, by the state?
There was a regular audit, not by the city. By the Lottery Commission, there was an audit, and then after that audit was done, we were not, our license was not suspended. They were mostly angry at me, because we had put our own money into the accounts, which they felt was not proper.
I have questions about this. I have a great respect for John Presiosa. We have had our dealings in the past.
I'm not sure I recall any. I don't know what those were.
I do.
I only remember, I was here once before, and there was only one gentleman, and that's why I was a little hesitant and nervous about it tonight, because it was a horror show. And I was, my wife cried after that meeting.
Well, I have reservations about this, because I remember when that bingo was running, and, you know, there was many questions about the way things were being done at the time.
I can explain all of those, but probably at the other meeting.
It seems, most of this seems to be about smoking, you know, and I don't think that was entirely the issue at that time, because the lottery was very involved.
The lottery did an audit.
Right.
Because they did, they felt that the bookkeeping, because we had put our own money in there and everything, they were upset that the money was mixed, and that was a violation of state law.
And they were also looking for their state taxes.
Yes, because when things got bad, they did, like any of the lottery sales agents, they'd go into your bank account and take the money, and sometimes there wasn't enough money there. And that's why we owe them the $3,000.
Okay, I would only suggest, and I know we have an excellent chairman of license, but I think there's many questions to be answered here. I just saw this tonight, so I didn't prepare much. But I think there's a lot of questions to be answered to go back into that era of '04, '05, and '06. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Condon. Counselor Kinnon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have spoken to Mr. Chopoulos on a number of occasions over the last year. This actually would be coming into ward six at the VFW. I am in full support of this proposal, although I have questions, and I'd like all that information provided to the license committee prior to any approval. But when I look at this from a historical perspective for the community, the good of this group has far outweighed any bad in terms of what it's delivered for the young people in the community over those years. Secondly, I know there's some invoices owed to the city. You can't take blood from a stone. The only way we're going to get it back is in order for them to make agreements, which Mr. Chopoulos, in talking to me, agreed that a certain amount would be set aside. If that was not, we would revoke the license immediately. But if they're not in operation, there's no hope of ever collecting that money back. And thirdly, I would just remind the council that if it is only $3,000 or something like that, there are certainly other organizations in the city, some of which we talked of this evening, that we have been subsidizing to a much greater extent over the last few years, maybe longer, and that also provide a good for the community. But this will, on an ongoing basis, provide something outside of sports to keep children and young adults out of trouble. So I am in complete support of this today, with that information coming to license, and I'm sure Counselor Anderson can handle it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Christensen. Excuse me, Counsel Kinnon. Counsel Anderson, for the second time. Counsel Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to assure the council that in the license committee, we will not be unmindful of the past problems, that we want to make sure that we explore those things and resolve those past issues, and if possible, allow this organization to get back on its feet and move forward. So this will be, you know, no quick review and off-going. We want, as Counsel Kinnon has just mentioned, you know, we want the group to supply us with the background and the history, so that we can have a thorough review, and put in place procedures that we can rectify our past problems and move forward. So with that, I would move that we send this to license for further review, and expect that the representatives of the organization will send to us the background informations in preparation for that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. If I may from the chair, just a point of clarity, too, is, one is, does the state notify, or have we notified Malden Catholic being so close, if there's any issues with you literally being two billions away?
I went to Malden Catholic Sunday afternoon, and I said hello to the gentleman in charge. His name is Joe. I don't know his last name.
Do we notify them?
Excuse me?
Is it possible that we can notify them for maybe this hearing?
It's up to you, what you feel your rules require.
Just have Malden Catholic representative, because I know in the past, anytime we added a bingo license, I know that they've come before the license committee several times, when they wanted to either extend their hours, Mr. Chairman, or add a day. So I think...
Well, I would suggest, Mr. President, that we just inform the city clerk to, direct the city clerk to send that notification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as well as, Mr. Chopoulos, I think it would be helpful, a final report from the lottery, or the lottery agency, just showing that they've done an audit, and...
Yes, they did an audit. In fact, I think they still have all the paperwork.
I think that'd be, you know, helpful not only to the entire council, but also the licensing committee.
It would like us to, excuse me, I'm not sure, to do what?
Bring the results of that report.
Oh, okay, I'll ask.
Because once it goes to license...
I can call the head auditor and ask her about that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And the only other thing I would mention is that it's not up to me whether or not the city will get the money from the bingo, because I'm not involved in the bingo. John, Mrs. Lewis, and some other people from Malden and the area, they're the ones that make the decisions, okay? Just so you understand, that that is a big change from the way, where I was in charge before.
Thank you, Mr. Chopoulos. On that being said, on Counsel Anderson, Counselor Condon for the second time.
Thank you. I would only suggest that, I would think that it would be very, very important that the license committee receive the results of that audit and the findings of the lottery commission, okay? I'm sure they were sent to you, Mr. Chopoulos, so, well, I would only suggest that, you know, the license not be granted until you get an opportunity to see those results. So I think it's incumbent upon you to produce them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Condon. On Counsel Neil Anderson's motion to refer to licensing, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matters referred to license. Thank you, Mr. Chopoulos. Thank you, Mr. President. Next order of business.
Standing Committee on License to Whom Was Referred Paper, 43 Renewal of Taxi Cab License Taxi Time, voted favorably three to nothing. Counsel Anderson for the paper.
The committee report?
On Counsel Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move granting.
On Counsel Anderson's motion to grant, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is granted.
The Standing Committee on License to Whom Was Referred Paper, number 44A through E, Series of 2009, make the following recommendation, that these licenses be granted three to nothing.
Move we receive the committee report?
On Counsel Neil Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? On Counsel...
Move granting.
On Counsel Neil Anderson's motion to grant, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Paper is granted. Next order of business.
Standing Committee on License to Whom Was Referred Paper, 45, Series of 2009, make the following report. Renewal of amusement machines, Ryan's Family Amusement, 11 Charles Street. The committee recommends that this license be granted three to nothing.
Move that we receive the committee report?
On Counsel Neil Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move granting.
On Counsel Neil Anderson's motion to grant, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Paper is granted.
Standing Committee on License to Whom Was Referred Paper, number 42A and B, Series of 2009, make the following recommendation. Committee recommends that the licenses be granted three to nothing.
Move we receive the committee report?
On Counsel Neil Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move granting.
On Counsel Neil Anderson's motion to grant, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Paper is granted.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance to Whom Was Referred Paper, number 9, Series of 2009, ordered that the ordinance committee draft an ordinance regarding the public use and possession of marijuana. Committee recommends this paper be granted.
On Counsel Neil Kinnon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel Kinnon? On Counsel Christensen's motion to amend in accordance with the committee report, Counselor Christensen for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a quick synopsis, the voters passed in November to decriminalize an ounce or less of marijuana. When the state went to adopt the regulations after the ballot question had passed, one of the suggestions they made is that cities and towns might want to take a look at the use of marijuana in public places. So the ordinance committee, led by Chairman Kinnon, took the issue. We went over it a couple of weeks now, had a very good discussion, and I think we've come up with a decent compromise. Every member of the committee played a role. Counsel DePietro worked on, you know, the use-possession discussion. Counsel Nester worked on the issue about detaining people that may be caught, the whole ID question. Counsel Anderson, Neil Anderson, made sure that we covered every public place that falls under our domain. And then Counsel Kinnon, in his capacity as chairman, led the discussion for the past couple of weeks. So I think it's a good compromise. Who knows, we may have to ever employ it, but if we do, we're ready. We're now starting to see that those cities and towns are looking at what we're doing, and they may possibly adopt it themselves. The other thing, it strikes a good balance, I think, with the voters who spoke on this question back in November. The statewide vote was 70/30 to decriminalize. Here in Malden, it was 60/40. We were cognizant of that, and we did not, in this ordinance, suggest to criminalize it again. You know, we left it decriminalized. We just made sure that the size of the fine is increased if marijuana is caught in public places. So I thought it was a very good committee discussion, and I would entertain any questions if members might have any.
Any questions for the sponsor? Well, I think you weigh into the mall council. It sounds like a complete team effort there. And with that being said, on Counselor Christensen's motion to enroll, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Nester?
Yes.
Yes. On Counselor Christensen's motion to suspend rules for the purpose of ordaining, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Rules are suspended. On Counselor Christensen's motion to ordain, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Christensen?
Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Nester?
Yes.
Spatafora. Next order of business.
Ordinance Committee has interviewed the people for the arts council, make the following recommendations. All of these require confirmation, so we'll do them individually?
Yes.
Peter Levine, 32 Seaview Ave. Committee recommends adoption four to nothing.
On Counsel Kinnon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're going to vote on?
Roll call.
Roll call. Clerk will call the roll.
Peter Levine?
Can you just repeat on the mic, now clerk, within the address?
Peter Levine, 32 Seaview Ave. Counsel Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Nester?
Yes.
Spatafora?
Yes.
Next man is John Webster, 25 Seaview Terrace. Counsel Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Nester?
Yes.
Next person is Catherine Struzel, 19 Payne Terrace. Counsel Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Nester?
Yes.
Diana Jong, 12 West Street. Counsel Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro? Diana Jong, 12 West Street. Counsel Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Nesta?
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Susan Lawrence, 176 Glenwood Street. Counsel Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Nesta?
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
And Owen Knight, 20 Valley Street. Subject to meeting with the Ordinance Committee. Date to be determined. Counsel Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Nesta?
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
And the claim of Tony Trevanova, 12 Dunen Street, Medford.
On Counsel, you want to read it? Madam Clerk, please?
Solviges.
Just read the name of the admiss.
Terry Trevanova, 12 Dunen Street, Medford.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to refer to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Paper is referred to finance. Yep, we have one addition to the committee reports from Counsel Paul Anderson from the Efficiency Committee. On Counsel Anderson's, excuse me, on Counsel Neil Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yeah.
Counsel Neil Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Mr. President. The Finance Committee and the Efficiency Committee has been meeting with the mayor and the financial team on invitation from the mayor, and on instructions from the Council President. Last week, we met with the Council President, because it is a new committee, to outline what it was that he was expecting of this committee. And he gave us the following duties and charges, that he, we are to work with the Finance Committee and the administration to make city government more efficient, establish priorities for us to deal with the financial picture of the city, both today and in the future. To that endeavor, the three members of the Finance Committee, I mean, of the Efficiency Committee, myself, Gary Christensen, and James Nesta, have taken up that charge, and are looking for help in that regard. Because of the circumstances of the finances of the city that we're looking at now, and in the immediate future, we're going to need more than just 11 heads, or 12 heads. We're going to need thousands of brains and ideas, working as a community, to get through the financial crises that we're facing now, and to establish a foundation for what we're going to have in the future. So we're going to take written dialogue from anybody who wants to submit to the City Council, either through email on our website, or to any of the members of the Efficiency Committee, which we will share with the entire council, suggestions. And let me caution the, the members of the general public, that it's not a headhunt. We don't want to say, well, I don't like that guy, let's get rid of him. I don't like this person, let's get rid of that. What it is, is a concerted effort to move forward, at the wish of the Council President, the mayor, and the entire City Council, to find more efficiency, more priority for government for the long haul. We're in it immediately, because of the, the numbers that we're facing now, and we'll have to address that pretty much now. We just received from the mayor, that some of the proposals that he's looking at for 20,000, 2010, and we'll be going through those. But what we're looking for from the general public, is establishing a priority in government. What's the last department you would like to see have to be cut? And if, is it the police department, fire department, schools, library, senior center, public works? Whatever it is, let us know where you think we can't afford to cut. Finding, helping us find financial sources for city government. Are you in favor of more taxes, more fees, more fines, an override, or even an exclusion, or anything else? Because if you want more services in the long haul, it's going to be expensive, and we're going to have to pay for it. We have no funds coming from the state. I think the mayor put it pretty, pretty straightforward to us at our last meeting Thursday, when he says that 50% of our budget comes from the state. So we're like partners with the state. And when your partner doesn't give you that much money to fund it, then either we pick up the tab, or we do away with the services. So what we're looking for from the general public is, what's the minimum level of services that you expect from your community? If we're not giving you enough, tell us. If we're giving you too much, tell us. If you're cutting something out of the budget, tell us who's going to pick up that responsibility, or how you expect us to address that. If you want to add something to it, tell us that, too. And also, try to help us find the funds to do that. We're trying to put a collective minds together and bring the public in, because we do see the cuts that have been announced by the governor and his budget, and we're trying to find the middle of the road to get us through this shot time, and also build a foundation for going forward. Because unless we find alternate funding sources, you can imagine what will leave for our legacy to our children 20 years from now, when 75% of your pay, instead of 50, is going to taxes to pay for government. If we don't find that level of funding, and find that alternate means of what we provide for services, and work together to find that common ground. So we'll, we'll entertain written testimony for that. We will start working on this in, in public meetings in about two weeks. So that'll give us time to get some of the dialogue from you people, and we'll have time to read the, the packages that have been presented to us. And hopefully, going forward, we can find some solutions that get us through this tough times at the behest of our Council President. That is what we intend to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. Any questions for the sponsor, or any member of the efficiency team? With that being said, thank you, Counsel Anderson. I look forward to your report. And with that being said, the docket is now clear. I'll entertain motions for personal privilege, starting from my right. Starting on my left, Counselor Christensen.
Just want to let the members know, Mr. President, that working with Sheila Fromano, we finally have a revamped snow and ice removal list on the city's website. It's under the, I guess, the news part of the website, but we're slowly rebuilding the list of potential snow and ice removal contractors, to try to match them up with residents that might need the service. Hopefully, I didn't jinx us, jinx us by talking about snow, but we do have a list up, and people will feel free to use it. I just also want to remind the Malden West Little League, there are some folks from the ward that are in that organization.